And I think the first order would be for if you all want to discuss or make an animation or talk about who may want to be the interim chair to run the meetings until a chair is approved by the commission.
I think myself that it should be one of these two ladies because they have more experience than I do and they have been here in the past many years. So kindly I asked them maybe one of them between them they want to speak and decide which one of the two would like to do that. I guess, is it second? I'm planning to resign after the meeting with the commission this afternoon. When there's two, we can run it. Pat, you and I?
Well, we're missing...
Dawn is going to be gone for a while. She told me a couple of months maybe, a couple of weeks, because of her back surgery.
Oh, okay. We do need three for a quorum.
Yeah. Some of these have filled two spots.
But the commission can appoint two people here to fill those spots. So if the remaining Pat is not interested in being the interim, would you just to run the meeting?
I'm all for it, but I believe in, you know, seniors, you know? If they would like to do it, I will gladly do it. If nobody wants to do it, the thing is, sir, I don't know anything about trees.
Well, just to run the meeting, you know, to ask for a motion, a second, those kind of issues.
In that, I have to get a book at the library to read about that because I don't even know what that means. Take a motion and a motion and somebody?
Bet you somebody here will help you.
Will help you do that. So if you can do that, you just need to call for each item on the agenda. You can call for a motion to approve the minutes.
The minutes we're talking about would be...
Yeah. We were back for July 28th.
Would you call the July 28th?
Yeah, there was no meeting in...
No.
There was no war from last month, so there's...
Did you all receive them?
Yeah.
So it's the 28th meeting that you want?
Yes, because there was no one in the meeting. What happened at that meeting?
Yeah. Here's a word on page three. Plus one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen at the bottom that said, "Treaty Board is fraud with all kinds of administrative problems." I think that was meant to be fraud, F-R-A-U-G-H-T. That's a correction. I would break that.
Is the fourteen from the bottom there?
Mm-hmm. Three board is fraud.
Yeah.
You see three board on the margin?
Yep.
After Dr. Jordan. Fraud. So how should it be spelled?
F-R-A-U-G-H-T.
Oh. So it means look really good, see?
We did all this last time.
Yes.
It was in July? It was a two, it was supposed to be our meeting. It's two hour meeting.
We went on a field trip, remember?
Yeah.
Usually it's been up that long, it's usually one page, but...
So Keith, you did this assessment of the tree on the Windstream property?
Yes, ma'am. So the motion to approve with the change indicated?
I moved everything except the minutes as corrected. I don't see anything bad.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. So the only thing on the agenda today is the, I don't know if you wanted to go over the tree plan again. You're going to go over it jointly with the commission this afternoon. Since we had two new members, I think since it was submitted, I didn't know whether or not it would be here and then I didn't know if you all want to go over it, what you're presenting.
I think that the paragraphs highlighted in yellow and struck through means somebody would like to eliminate those.
Those are my recommendations to the commission. Just for elimination. It'll be up to them if they want to get there.
I read through the package and I haven't been here since the plan was made and I saw the corrections you did. I didn't see nothing wrong with them. I just saw a lot of extra wording. You got rid of a lot of extra wording or maybe negative things and I don't see nothing wrong with that. So I really don't understand what was the problem. Well, could I speak?
Sure.
I had written a letter from Washington State where I was listening to my son because I've been thinking about our issues with the city commission and I had heard with Mayor Myers herself. So I had called her and this letter that I meant to be, well, it doesn't matter. We didn't meet last month. So I would like to ask everybody to read it now. Does everybody have it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay.
May I ask who's Bill Maiden?
Me.
Bill?
Oh, that's my husband's name.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I don't know that guy.
Oh, let me see where this is. And to that end, I feel like a lot of the things that you're recommending we strike from the plan deal with not observing horticultural best practices. We'll, I guess, discuss that therefore.
Yes.
But that's why I wrote the letter. Been feeling that way for some time, that we are not listened to or our recommendations are not respected. So...
And at the workshop, I encourage you all to, you know, advocate for your position with the commission. They're going to give us the result. We'll work with whatever they approve and come up with. So I would encourage you to do that. We're going to have it set up in sort of a round table format. We're going to spread this out a little more and so that we're not just sitting around the table. We'll go through each paragraph by paragraph, talk about it. Something that I've recommended is striking. If you guys go strongly, keep it in there, make your case. I encourage you to make your case to the commission. They say, all right, let's leave it. Then we'll leave it. That's what the workshop's about, to work it out. And that's what was in their desire from the beginning, rather than just vote yes, no, and just keep sending it back to you, rather than sit down together and kind of figure out what the issues are. Okay?
Is Keith going to be there?
He can if you'd like him to be there. He's holding his breath right now.
I know, he wants to go home. Well, it might be helpful, but...
Guess I'll be here for...
...carries out these playoffs.
We do want to report, you're probably aware, I'm sorry.
But he's here right now. Do you have any questions that maybe he can answer you? Because at four, if he leaves, he's here now.
He's going to stay for the workshop.
Oh, he's going to stay with the workshop. Okay, so we don't have to worry.
You're probably aware that we had a rather large oak tree fall onto a house over in Magnolia.
Oh, yeah, BJ's yard.
We removed that tree and we've trimmed back, had a companion tree, about the same size, firm. They had it recommended we lighten that tree up. If it falls, it's going to take out a lot of power lines and phone lines that are running. What was the cross street there?
Oakwood.
Oakwood. So yesterday, I believe it was yesterday or before, they just reduced the canopy of that tree, hoping it'll stand a little longer. The one that fell wasn't roots at all. It just sort of snapped off at the soil.
Saw a picture.
Yeah, so we've had some calls on some other, another tree on Magnolia. It's a water oak that the resident is afraid is going to fall. So we're going to take a look at that one and we've got to get...
No, go ahead. Well, my question is, was that tree that fell on BJ's house on city property?
It was in the right of way.
Okay. When it fell?
Yeah, it was located in the right of way.
Okay, so the city cleans those up?
Well, when I discovered, we cleaned that one up and since then I've been informed that by statute, the homeowner is actually responsible. So even if like your neighbor's tree falls into your yard, you have to clean up the tree.
Yeah.
They take the part that's still in their yard and you get to rest. So, but we already cleaned that one up, so we'll know in the future.
Okay. And then you have in front of Dexter Park, Ms. Juanita, the older 84-year-old lady, African-American. Apparently that tree in her yard fell too.
A big piece of it broke off and some folks have gotten together voluntarily to help her cut that up.
I just found out today that she's 84 years old and bad health, you know? I'm having the same problem in my yard with, and I went and talked to Windstream about it because I don't know whose this tree is. And it's the tree right opposite the Gasebo. Half of it is in our side and the other half is over this empty grass and is hollow. It has a huge hole and you can see that it's dying on that side. My husband is willing to trim it. You know, we don't want to kill it or anything like that. I went to Windstream, talked to them and a gentleman in there said, "I don't care about the tree." I'm like, "Okay, we'll take care of it." So...
Do you know what kind of tree it is?
It's a huge oak. It's a huge oak, but half of it looks healthy and it's leaning towards my house and the other half that is over the grass is looking like it has cancer and disease, you know? So my husband said it cannot be trimmed too much because it will be tilted and that way that you have to prune it very little, you know? So we found a huge hole at the bottom. So we know maybe something has to be put in that hole, like dirt or something.
Is something living in there?
Nothing is living in there. We cleaned all around it, the tree, you know? Like I said, half of it looks healthy, but the other half looks bad. And then my husband told me city property, so maybe Keith one day might want to go back and look at it because we're willing... we willing not to leave it on the city, we willing to pay for it or my husband.
Yeah, the grass lot belongs to Windstream, that is their lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
So my husband is wrong, he said he looked it on the map.
Yeah, half, half of it fell several years back, they did clean that up.
Yeah.
And then I've noticed that half of the tree is dead.
Yes, you've seen it.
And I'm pretty sure it's a water oak.
Okay.
So, you know, it's not live oak, I'm almost positive of that.
And I don't know the difference, what would that mean, water oak and live oak?
Live oak is like what fell at BJ Laurie's house.
Okay.
The heritage trees like across the street.
Yes.
Oh, it's a very lumpy bark, and water oak's almost a smooth bark.
Yes, and they live, live oaks live longer, water oaks, kind of as expected.
Okay, okay, so being nice with my neighbors because of what happened on the corner that with the tree that we had to put down like an animal, you know, I said, I don't want to put this tree down too, so let me go and talk to them, and they told me right away they do not care about the tree, so we're going to take it under our wings, my husband and I, the tree.
But Liz, when you're facing your house from the street, there's a totally dead tree to the left side of your lot, right on, right by the street, is that the one we're talking about?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
It's the one in between her house and the phone office.
Yeah, by the grassy.
It's the other side.
Oh, by the house that is abandoned, the house that is abandoned next to me.
The house is what?
Abandoned.
Oh, I don't know, I can't even see it, right?
The boarded up house.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So she might be talking about the same tree.
The south, the south is, no, it would be the north side, I'm for a lot.
Oh, yeah, the abandoned house.
Yeah, that's the tree I'm talking about, I've noticed it when I was starting.
Yeah, we noticed, we've been cleaning it since January with all these storms, it was falling and falling and falling, and we've been, you know, taking care of it.
But it's definitely on city property, is that right by the street?
We can look at it and see.
Yeah.
We bought a couple of small live oaks, we want to put one in Fletcher Park for the new picnic tables to provide, someday provide some shade, and the other ones for Harriebanks, right?
The other ones, y'all had made a recommendation about putting some trees at Harriebanks Park for the two dead ones we're going to cut down, he bought some trees to go there.
How big are they?
They're just us.
Well, just one of those.
Yeah, it's a thirty gallon pot, the Trump's, they're taller than me, they're, they're night-sized trees, we bought some Craig Myrtle trees, some single trunk Craig Myrtle trees, we're going to put them in the front, a few in the front of the annex and move those, that Craig Myrtle there, not doing very well, we want to salvage it, it's like a black leaf with a white flower, very pretty, it could be very pretty if it were healthier, and then down, some of the palm trees have been removed on Center Street, on Central, put them in there to someday provide shade, let them all bloom and be attractive.
I joined the Arbor Foundation and they're going to send me some seeds and send me a maple tree, I don't know where to put a maple tree, so I was going to give it to the city.
Comes in the mail, so you know it's not real big. Yeah, we have recommended in the past that something be done about, oh Lord, I never can remember the name of that park, at the north end of, of, just past Halley's Landing, that little park.
Cogburn Park.
Cogburn, okay, there's a big old oak tree in there that looks very sick and.
We cut one of them down.
Okay.
We, yeah, because Harriebanks asked us to cut it down, that one, that might be the one you're talking about, we cut it down a couple of years ago, and yeah, the stunted playgrounds and everything.
There's one still there though, in the playground area.
Yes ma'am, it's a big live oak, and this other one, I'm pretty sure was a live oak, but it was in pretty bad shape.
Okay, you think the, the one that's there now is viable, not going to drop a limb on a kid?
I can't guarantee that, but I mean, we can look at it, it's just, we will definitely have to, you know, plant a couple of trees back there one day.
And like Pat, you said that maybe when it got cooler, and now, I know you're leaving, thank you, that on us that stay and the committee, that we needed to go around town and check on all these trees, because like people, they have a life, you know, I don't know how long they've been around, but some of them look like they're dead, you know, walking dead, so, it's just, I guess things that have to be done, because that was the main thing that the Arborists said when we had to put that tree down in the corner of Windstream, that we have neglect, neglected our trees or overpruned, so, you know, it's nothing to do with us or who's here, it's just the past, you know, people don't understand that they are alive and they just let them go, you know, and now it's up to us to take care of this and maybe gain enemies, because they have to be put down.
The thing with the over pruning too, is that P and L, and it's hard to stop them because they have to do what they have to do.
Yes, exactly.
Just like the tree here at City Hall, the one across the street, we really can't stop them.
Yeah.
And yet they butcher them over the years, and there's a lot of them out there, when they get done butchering, they should have just cut it down to the ground, but they don't do that.
Thank you, I didn't, I didn't thought about that, you know, has nothing to do with you.
Right, we can't stop.
The power.
Yeah, they, you know, they just, they've been butching them for years, and in places where they do need to be pruned, you can't get them in there, so.
Okay, thank you. Tree that was removed on Central Avenue and Windstream property, that was on their property wall, that was a tree.
It was wrong.
It's kind of empty, it was kind of on ours, on them.
Did we cut it down?
The Arborists did.
They did.
Yeah, he come back and, you know, he changed his recommendation, saying that it really, you know, it needs to come down, so he did cut it down.
And again, Pat, Windstream said they didn't want no responsibility if it fell on a car or a pedestrian, you know, they didn't want to have that liability, and I understand their point, I would not want that either, you know, and have to pay people if they break, you know, leg or something, I think humans are more important than the trees, and I love trees, but we have to have a happy medium on all of this, you know, we cannot please everybody, but we'll try to. So the Arborists looked at the tree and notified you.
He spoke with the city manager, when we were going to have our meeting last month, he was going to come in over the phone and do it in front of all of us.
I see.
And then after that, y'all didn't make it.
I am guilty of that, you ladies, I did not want to face you, because I was the one that put the tree down, but I asked him, because I respect an arborist, it's like a heart doctor, you know, and I asked him, you love trees, so tell us the truth, I know you don't want to put a tree down, and he told us the truth, and I spoke to somebody I met yesterday, Lee, he was your mayor at one time, he said he started twice, and he saved that tree in two thousand and nine from not getting killed, he said, so this tree has been on death row for a long time.
Anybody have anything else they want to bring up, sort of under general discussion?
So after roundtable this afternoon, it'll just be us three, because Donald's disabled and.
Correct, plus the commission. And we'll just walk through it, we're all the way through the document.
And we'll have sandwiches after.
We'll have sandwiches after, for example.
I didn't hear what you said.
We'll have sandwiches after the, at five o'clock. We're still going.
This proposal's tree plan for twenty-two, is that going to have twenty-three on it also?
It'll, it'll be twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay.
The other day.
This is different than what the tree board submitted two times.
So this is your second submission, what you have is the second, Kevin revised the first one.
Right, and this is remarkable.
Do you have this one? This has Charles's recommendation.
That's the version I sent out to the commission, yes, the yellow one.
You have it in the second packet.
Does it say that?
It does.
Yes.
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
All right, so this is your re, revision? This is revision.
It's a clean version.
You took these things out.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, I don't remember reading some of this.
Actually, everybody needs this copy.
We all have it.
For four o'clock, you have it in your other packet, you have the second packet.
With the yellow.
It's in the other envelope?
No.
It's in the.
I probably have it all.
I'm just giving.
I almost did make it here today.
It's right there, it's under your other envelope, your other folder. For four, for the four o'clock meeting.
Oh, the twenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't have the yellow.
No.
Well, that's folder, there's all these folders.
Yeah, this is.
What? This is folder day.
Okay.
There you are.
That you'll need at the. So you're showing me the before and the after.
Yeah, an unmarked copy and then my recommendation.
Okay, so this is it?
That's the plan, that's the unmarked plan.
Okay. So did this have to be approved by anyone?
Well, that's what you all instructed Kevin to submit, yeah.
Is it good?
Well, if you see my edits, they're in your other packet.
Okay.
Yeah, you need to bring what he struck out, because what he gave us today was.
Just the.
Yeah, you, you had mentioned, we're going to plant this tree, we're going to plant that, we bought this, we bought that, and this is from what committee, yours, your revitalization committee or your?
The, the plants outside here?
Yes, well, the, the plants, you said, they're, they're on city property, I assume, you know.
Yes.
Yeah, all right, so I just want to know, where did those ideas and those choices come from?
Well, for the annex, they came from my head, for Central, the redevelopment plan has us improving the streetscape, and palm trees have been mostly removed as they were touching the power lines, so we need another street tree to replace that won't interfere with the power line in the future, so things like a drake elm, Craig Myrtle, those are slower, both of them will lose their leaves, but the advantage of it's great is it blooms, if it's happy, it'll bloom beautifully, an oak tree would get up into the power line again and we'd have to cut it into a V shape.
Yeah, I hate that.
Just don't hat rack the Craig Myrtles, when Dixie cuts them all like this, these out here are so pretty.
They'll be like the ones in the median where we just keep limbing a lot of that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think my point was, why the decisions being made by different groups or by you with your love of trees and flowers, because I see you out there all the time playing with them, so, not playing, I'm not going to play, we don't have anything to say about it. We don't have any recommendations.
I, I haven't received any from you, no.
And you just, I mean, you're not saying this is written on stone, you're just suggesting, so, Pat is not like he's going to do it tomorrow, he's just thinking about it.
Well, we, we had a conversation, I think last fall, I encourage you all to develop recommendations, like, hey, we should put Camillas at the boat ramp, or we should restore the azaleas to Ebelion Park, or.
I'll start.
All that.
If nobody has done it, I will start.
Then I'll have it, and as we find funding, we'll make the purchase, do the installation, right now I'm doing the installation myself, because my guys, it's all they can do to mow, to keep up with the mowing and edging every day, so I do it on my Fridays, I do a workday Friday, sometimes I do it on Saturday or Sunday, so, because it's extra on top of the mowing, once the season slows down, I'll have the guys available, do some planting, but if you all, again, I'll reiterate, if you want to come up with ideas, like, hey, let's, Lake Stella Park, we should line the road with, with flowering trees or something, and we'll, and we'll move forward, but.
I'm here to work with you and it just, I get so emotional about everything, I just want to work together, not see the enemy over there, I think he's trying, ladies, give him a chance.
Yeah, one question that will possibly come up this afternoon, has anybody looked at those cypress trees that look like they're dying on Lake Stella waterfront?
I, I talked to the Arborists about it, he needed to know which trees they were, I don't know which trees they are.
Well, it's hard to tell now because they're all beginning to turn a little bit, but they were yellow all summer, and there's about five or maybe more in a row, about halfway, you know, in that whole row of cypresses, and they're little, stunted looking and turned yellow.
Are they near, are they near the bird tower, or are they near the beach at the edge?
They're north of the bird thing.
Yeah.
At the end of Edgewood, yeah.
They're, they're north of that.
They're right, they're, they're right at Fletcher Park, I mean Dexter Beach, and it's right, what I'm thinking, what I'm thinking's happening with the trees is a lot of water runs off right there off of the street and a lot of the leaves, and I think it's the acidic acid that's stunted the growth of them, because all the other trees are perfect.
Yeah, they're.
But they're in that low-lying area, and that's also where our Outfall ditch from Edgewood goes out into the lake, and they've been stunted for years, I mean, all the other trees, they were all planted at the same time.
I remember.
And, but I, I think it's the, something that's in the soil, that's causing them not to grow, because it's right where that runoff is.
I wonder what you could do about it.
Well, it's, you know, the curve goes right there, and then it opens up into the grass field and then it comes in and all the trash and the leaves, it runs off into the lake right there.
Yeah.
And, you know, a lot of it's being caught by the storm drain, but what's not, is bleeding off right there, because you'll actually see, they put a little concrete swell years ago, and I personally think it's the, the, you know.
Oil and stuff.
Oil and stuff like that, because it's all bleeding right there, and I don't really think there's going to be anything we can do about it.
Lee told me that, Lee told me that at one time, and I just met Lee yesterday, so I don't know what kind of character he is, I actually like him, but he told me in the past, when they had all these birds, bird poop inundated Dexter Park, and that can be gases too and poisonous, if you have a lot of poop.
Yes ma'am, and, and too again, it's, it's the buzzards, when they have big events there, the people don't clean their trash up like they're supposed to, then the buzzards get into it, they scatter it everywhere, that's why we, once a month, we have to pull a water sample.
Oh, okay.
From Lake Stella, and it goes to the lab.
Yes.
And we have to pull it, there's no way around it, the water plant operator, Jason, has to go down there and get the water sample and take it to Ocala, and.
He was just fascinated how people can fight, but whenever the bird poop is there, nobody says, we cannot swim, there's bird poop on this water.
Yeah, we are, I love it.
If it comes back, if it comes back as a, a bad test, we have to, we have to notify, we have to close the.
Close the, yeah.
And we've only done that a couple of times since I've been here.
So those birds.
It's definitely not a tree commission issue, but we have serious overpopulation of oak trees, and they get on my roof and pick on my solar panels, and I have permission from the former police chief and a former mayor, which I have bottle rockets saying, which I do, so if y'all hear, and it gets rid of them temporarily, but I mean, there'll be like forty on this pine tree in Beth Asbury's yard, which is behind mine, and twenty in an oak tree in my yard, and then the overflow gets on my roof, and it's disgusting.
They're all over the, the water tower, there'll be fifty of them on the water.
Oh, gosh, yeah, yeah.
But they're protected.
Yeah, you know, that. Yeah, you know, that tree in Beth Asbury's yard, it is, I would think on the city right of way and it's a pine tree that they killed. It was a lonely pine, tallest tree in the neighborhood. And it used to have osprey nests. And every spring they would hatch out and then the vultures started taking it over. They tore up the nest and I think their claws have made it vulnerable to mark beetle or something because it's died totally dead. So if it falls, I mean, I wish we could take it down for it because I'm sure you can't afford to. But you know where it's on Lakeview.
I'll look at it.
Corner of Park and Lakeview.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's a nasty tree and vultures love it.
Anything else?
Birds and trees kind of go together.
We'll see you at four o'clock?
Okay, good.